I'm now calling to order the Planning Commission for November 11th, 2015. And before we do the call to order, the roll. I would like to take a moment for anyone here or anyone watching and honor our veterans today. We are here doing what we do because of them. So I happen to know we have at least one veteran on our Planning Commission. So I would like to thank you. And of course, thank you to anyone else that actually is watching that isn't a veteran. All right, now we will do the roll call.
Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
And Chair Birch?
Here. And I will ask everyone please stand and join Commissioner Erickson for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any written communications this evening?
There is a Desk Item 4, Item Number 2.
Has everybody had a chance to review the Desk Item? All right. Requested continuances. I believe we do have one.
We do have a requested continuance. Staffs are requesting that Item Number 3 be continued to January 13th.
Yeah, we need a motion. Commissioner Erickson?
So moved.
Have a second? Vice Chair Badami? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, commissioners serve on various other committees and commissions for the town. Do we have any reports this evening? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, Mary and I participated earlier today, 4:00 actually, with the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee. We considered a group of us, because as you recall, there are two council people on it and two planning commissioners. We considered a project at 17076 Summit Way, and most of us, I think, are aware of Summit Way and Wild Way. And we were asked to consider access to that property and to give some suggestions. There were two possible accesses. One involving having to take down a number of trees. And it wouldn't surprise anybody to know that we weren't in favor of that one. So it's a non, the CDAC Committee is merely advisory. It doesn't render a decision. The next matter, and really the final matter we considered, was a very, very interesting matter. It was the North Forty. And in that, we had received last day or two, the economic study which was required. And so we discussed with the expert, the economic study prepared for by the applicant. And that was, that was an interesting discussion. We then discussed the below maintenance, pardon me, the BMP requirement, if at all, and the proposed senior housing for lower-income seniors. It was a very, very interesting, about an hour-plus discussion of that. There, as you know, are three applicants, Grosvenor and Summerhill, and the, pardon me, the people who would actually run the senior citizens. The name eludes me at the moment. In any event, we discussed those three things. The applicants were very forthcoming, and we had a very, very interesting discussion. There were about four people from the public here, and they're people we know well. They attend many meetings. And I was, I hate to say I was surprised, but they were very supportive of the proposal. And in fact, one of them told us we shouldn't really mess with it. It was like, if you change one thing, you're going to change the whole thing. So it was, for me, it was a very educational meeting. And it was educational because the questions we asked were answered. So that's, that's what we did this afternoon for an hour and a half or two. And that's my report.
Right, do we have any other reports? Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. I sit on the Plan Development Committee along with Melanie Hanson and Charles Erickson. And we had a meeting last Thursday. We meet every other Thursday, looking at the, and discussing the ad hoc draft for plan developments that we had all seen prior to this. We are now, I'm happy to say, I think, pretty much in agreement on the intent of what we're, as we move forward with looking at plan developments. We're going to be expanding the scope of that, that draft, that original draft, and by, you know, adding amendments in certain ways. And we're in the process of doing that now. And I, we, I believe that the work will continue until probably the end of the year. So we'll see what we have to look at, and then we'll, we'll get it as a Planning Commission.
Should be very interesting. Any others? No? Thank you. "The town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written comments about agenda items submitted to the staff prior to the meetings are always helpful. And at the meetings of the Commission, there are two ways to address the Planning Commission. First is during verbal communications, you can fill out a speaker card, speak on any item which is not on the agenda. And second is during an agenda-ized item, fill out a speaker card, and during the public participation portion, you can be called to speak. I do not have any speaker cards, so we will move on from that to, we will now move on to Item Number 1, which is the Consent Calendar and Approval of the Minutes for October 28th, 2015." Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll move to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2015. I didn't have any corrections.
Okay, have a second. Commissioner Badami?
I'll second the motion.
All right. You have a comment, or are you just anticipating? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, that moves us to Item Number 2. Architectural and Site Application S-15-018. Requesting approval to demolish an existing office building, construct a new single-family residence, construct an accessory structure with reduced setbacks, and obtain a grading permit. This is APN Number 410-16-026. I did want to make a quick note to everybody that on the packet, it did mention the zoning ordinance, but if you recall in our last meeting, we had already recommended approval of the change to the zoning, so that is not part of our discussion this evening. Are there any disclosures on any commissioners, for any commissioners? And I know we've all visited the site. Ms. Walters, I understand you'll be giving us a report this evening.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, the Commission is only considering the architecture and site application for this property. On October 14th, the Commission considered the architecture and site application to demolish an existing medical office and to construct a two-story residence with a detached garage with a reduced three-foot rear setback. The Commission continued this application and directed the applicant to consider three different items. To consider reducing the mass of the house, to consider reducing the size of the garage, and to, number three, to consider meeting the five-foot rear setback required for a detached garage. In order to reduce the mass and scale of the proposed house, the applicant has lowered the overall roof pitch. By lowering this, it lowers to a height, lowers the height by 11 and 1/2 inches. The applicant has also provided justifications, and this can be found in Exhibit 21, where the garage size meets the Town Code requirements with regards to allowable FAR and lot coverage. The garage is compatible with a neighborhood streetscape that is along Andrews Street. The proposed garage meets all setback requirements with the exception of the rear setback. And the request for a reduced rear yard setback for an accessory structure is not a variance, rather, it is an exception from the Town Code. The applicant has provided further justification for the proposed three-foot rear setback, and the proposed project meets all criteria required by the Town Code. Tonight, staff has, staff has provided a Desk Item which includes letters of support from neighbors, and also includes revised conditions of approval that specifically addresses a neighboring redwood tree. Staff recommends approval if the Commission can determine the modification and justifications meet the Commission's direction, and this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I was trying to decide, there was a chart in here, in the, in the today's packet, comparing this residence to some of the other residences, but just going back to the last time we discussed it, with the one-foot reduction in height, I remember, I thought I remembered that in the last discussion, that, that without a revision in height, they would have been the second-largest home in the neighborhood. Where do, where does this stand now with the 11 and 1/2-inch reduction in height?
Yes, measured at the finished grade and comparing the immediate neighbors, this would be the tallest house by eight inches.
And, and that's comparing apples to apples, because I saw, you know, there was the, there was the finished grade, and then there was the pad, and so it's eight inches. But, so there, they would be the tallest house, and there isn't another house even on the, on the street that is taller than?
In the immediate neighbor, no. Neighborhood, no.
Okay, and then the immediate neighbor is defined by the five houses, and, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
The setback for accessory structures is five feet. And an exception to that can be granted, provided that structure meet the six points of, you know, the subprovision, of the provision that says, you've got to have five feet. And there's a subprovision that says, well, you could have three feet if. The third one is compatibility with other structures in the neighborhood. Teach me or share with me your point of view as to why that garage is compatible. And round numbers, the other garages, five of them, are 400 and something feet, and this guy's almost 800. Why, why is that compatible? I don't see a compatibility there.
Sure, so there's a setback, we're looking at a setback, and then also, Commission asked to look at the size of the, of the garage. So there's two items. So for the setback requirement, there is a criteria for asking for a reduced setback for accessory structures. And so per that, one of them is, is it compatible with the neighborhood? And from a streetscape perspective, the one-story garage on Andrews Street appears as one story. It's just the garage face, and so, and it's setback from the street. So from a neighborhood perspective, visually, it meets the...
There are six conditions that need to be met in order to get the exemption for three feet. I'm focusing on Number 3. Compatibility with other structures in the neighborhood. Narrow point. Are you saying it's not good enough to prohibit? It's not good enough to refuse the, the exception, because being twice the size of the other garages is okay? That...
So staff has traditionally looked at that, we, we look at all those criteria for, for looking at the criteria for exception for setback. In terms of the size of the garage, it is allowed, based as you saw in the report, it describes how there's a maximum FAR, and there's a maximum square footage and a lot coverage. So when those are all met, and from a streetscape perspective as well as looking at, are there any other adjacent garages that have that reduced setback? And it, it meets the, that criteria?
Commissioner Kane, we appreciate the question. I think, you know, this is staff's analysis. The Commission will have the opportunity after hearing public testimony and your own deliberations to make your own opinion. So you don't necessarily need to agree with staff. We don't want you to feel pressured to agree with staff. We are just trying to explain, from the exception perspective, why in this case we felt it was compatible. You could respectfully disagree, and that's completely fine.
I wanted a basis for agreement or disagreement. I didn't understand it because it didn't seem compatible to me. But a professional who does this may have wisdom to share with me as to why it may be simply too fine a point.
Just to follow up on that question, I, I think, I think you're doing this relative to specifically the, the setback, not the size of the garage, because you had an analysis for each. But my question is, to follow up on that, is, the applicant had a letter in here noting other houses in the neighborhood that may have had the same, had a reduced setback below the five feet. Does staff concur with that? And then, how is it that there are houses in the neighborhood that don't meet the five-foot requirement? Did it, the five-foot requirement predate those houses being built?
Sure, so there is a number of different homes in the immediate neighborhood that have that reduced setback for the detached garage. And it ranges in age from historic, from, I think it was 1900s, 1900s to 2000, 1997. So there's a range. And so, long ago, I'm not sure what the criteria was, but in recent times, those were incorporated into the Architecture and Site Application, application.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. All right. So we're now going to open the public portion of the hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the Commission for up to 10 minutes. So I have a card from both, both Mr. Black and Ms., I always say, say your name wrong, Wirthman. Okay. But combined, it's, since you're both, it's 10 minutes combined. So just wanted to make sure that you guys understood. So just make sure you state your name clearly for the record.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Michael Black, the applicant. It's good to see you all again. First off, just want to say thank you so much for approving the rezoning portion of this project. Last week, we were able to get City Council approval on the rezoning, and now we're able to focus on the site and architecture. We've got a small presentation for you, based on the three big questions we have on this, this project.
Hi, good evening and happy Veterans' Day. I just have to take this off. I don't like standing up here. I hope that our current updated supplemental will answer some of the questions that came up last time. If you read our adjusted letter of justification, we, we made great efforts to really specify certain parts of the design guidelines and hopefully answer any issues you may have had that were specific to last time. As a reminder, the continued items that were brought up were considering the overall mass and scale of the home, reducing the size of the detached garage, and meeting the required five-foot setbacks on each side for the accessory structure. Our first response, let me just back up. Our first response was actually that we did take care to reduce the overall pitch of the roof of the home to a 5 and 12 from the Cannon Group specified 6 and 12, which lowered the house by 11.5 inches. This brought the home very near the, not immediately adjacent neighbor, but neighbor two to the left, which was discussed at the last meeting. The other thing that we did was open up every single open gable end, became an open, articulated, detailed facade point that I think greater enhances the integrity of the architecture and helps it fit into kind of that new traditional element, as opposed to being fully hipped with just a few elements that had open gables. We are bringing you back the garage, exactly as we said it last time. We did further research, and we have additional justification to what we believe supports our proposal. As a reminder, how the town calculates FAR, this is taken right out of the town's brochure or flyer, I guess, not brochure, it's like an advertisement for FAR. The town's flyer for FAR, in the top in the blue is how the, how FAR is calculated for the home, and in the bottom, in the purple, is how FAR is calculated for detached accessory structure, à la our garage. There are two ways that FAR is calculated for that. One is a straight-up calculation as seen on the left, and ordained by the town. And then there's another one that says if it's going to encroach inside the setbacks, that it has additional reductions, so that it doesn't take up more than 15%. We've made sure to meet that further, more conservative reduction in square footage on the FAR. Lot coverage, we'll just skip over. As a reminder, we're this, we're this corner lot right here, and our immediate neighborhood is defined as these houses. I'm working with the Planning Department. The additional houses were added on so that we could have some supporting structures that were a little bit more relevant to our neighborhood. Again, just a reminder, you guys have all been out there. These are just pictures of what's existing on the, on the site. As you know, it's an antiquated office structure, and our proposal is to provide a single-family residence that I think is very site-responsive as a prominent home on the corner. In designing this home on the corner, a few of the things that we did to help reduce the overall look of bulk and mass on this property was to increase some of our setbacks at the front from 15 feet to 16 foot 6, on the side, all the way to 17 foot 3. You can see in the diagram here, this orange outline is the outline of actually the first floor of the house. The second floor sits inside that and is further reduced. And this outside element is the front entry porch. This is a very important element to me as an architect. I believe it's really important to address, address the corner at a pedestrian level. I think that this layering effect helps to anchor the home on, on a, on a person-to-person level at that corner. I think it, it adds architectural integrity to have that corner wrap, and again, pulls the mass and bulk of that house further in to the inside. Last time, we didn't have a rendering for you guys. I think the drawings that are always done in CAD, I mean, I even think so in our office, they're, they're always flat. They're, they're hard to see, they're, you know, they don't have a lot of life to them. So what we've done is create a 3D rendering for you. We did fit it into the story poles, as well as scalability between CAD and SketchUp software, so we know that this is sitting accurately on the site. And I just wanted to point out, this is, this is in our house with our reduce, or sorry, our corner porch that wraps around. Off to the side is our lower garage around the corner. And then, I think, the, these are the homes that are adjacent to us that were of concern last time in terms of how we fit in from an overall height perspective. Specifically addressing the height with the lowered, with the lowered roof pitch, here we are, we're kind of tucked in behind this existing trees. The house immediately to our left is, is a smaller, original home. You know, I imagine this is actually prime for the pick and diamond in the rough kind of thing. More relevant is new construction in the neighborhood, and we are within the eight inches, or 8.5 inches of the height of that. So this is that house that was discussed last time, where there was confusion over the overall height, and then our proposed home tucked into the corner here. You can see that even further down the street, across the street, while it is still across the street and doesn't share a particular property line, we're within what I would consider to be something that's a relative norm for, again, that overall bulk and mass and fitting in to the neighborhood. I think you're pretty familiar with the floor plans. So first floor plan, pretty tight little floor plan with a corner wraparound porch. Upper floor comes in even more and articulates further with some nice bays that give some detail to the exterior facade and a little bit of movement. Looking at our exterior elevations, one of the things that we have done is made sure that any open gable element we have, we've articulated with further detail, corbels, some, some better trim details, some fascia and eve details that are a little bit more consistent with a hybrid style of a shingled kind of craftsman effect home, this new traditional house. And that's consistent all the way around to the home. Anytime we have an open gable end rather than the hip, we've opened it up and provided further architectural detail. And then, again, just to go back, our heights on here, we're well within what the allowed norm is and fitting in nicely with the existing neighborhood. Moving on to the garage, we have provided you with a, a quick little study of what our garage looks like. You can see it's tucked back. The fencing reduces in height to accommodate the Public Works comments about clearances and views. It is a, a nice, small structure that is responsive to the immediate neighbor on both sides. Probably of utmost importance to you and relevant to questions that were earlier asked are, does this fit into the neighborhood? So our property is this red one right here. And the highlighted ones that are in this kind of dark bluish-purple are properties that we think are relevant for our argument for both reduced setback as well as garage size. So you'll note that these garage sizes are anywhere from 625, 692, 689. This one's a three-car garage. We're going to estimate that at around 600 or so. So all these just kind of give you in our immediate neighborhood, a little bit of an understanding of both reduced setbacks and larger-than-400 or 450 square-foot garages. Again, as a gentle reminder, we are within the conservative FAR for putting a garage inside setbacks. A little bit more about the garage. Here we go. We are 26 feet 8 inches to the street, so a nice, good distance from the street. 21 feet 4 from the side of the property line, enough to pull a car, tuck it in, be well out of the way of the public right-of-way, et cetera. You can see here that we have snuggled this garage back to this back corner. We've maintained the five-foot setback as relevant to a neighbor that has a similar setback in this back corner. And we've opted to take the more minimized three-foot setback at the back of the property in order to maximize the backyard, and also just kind of help out and be, fit in with the pattern of the language of the neighborhood. Just so you guys can understand this in a little bit more detail, again, the orange is the footprint of our garage overall. And so we understand really what we're talking about here. This is, this kind of standard or minimum-size garage is allowed by code. The additional nine-foot 8 space is to be used as kind of a workspace and storage space. This home, with its reduced height, does not have any attic storage space, and also, basement is not an affordable option for us, so storage is at a premium. This is our, our best location for that in the house. And, you know, we believe that with this setback off the street and tucked back into that interior corner, the relevance of that is, is pretty straightforward. Gosh, 30 seconds. Okay. So we're within the height and within the setbacks here. This is just a detail again of where we sit, relevant to that, as well as the overall look of the garage. Tight, little, tidy cottage-style garage, nicely detailed to match the house, so it's not like a big over, oversized structure with no detail. It does match detail architecturally with the home. As a reminder, and our materials board are up behind, behind you over here, as well as some samples, it was requested, we have a window and a roofing sample.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions? Commissioner Kane?
Were you done describing the materials?
No. So the materials, we're using an asphalt comp shingle. It's a high-definition shingle on the home. A metal roof standing seam is provided, has a satin finish. You can see the two seams and the finish over there. We do propose a painted shingle house, so it's a real shingle with a gray paint, a white trim, and dark windows for contrast, and a stone veneer. Other homes similar in Los Gatos would be these as example.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Hanson?
We talked a little bit the last time about the metal roof, and this would be the only house with the metal roof. Can you remind us of where on the house, you know, is it the entire roof? Because I, I thought there was maybe some other roofing material.
Yeah, let me get to the model. Okay. So on the model, the metal roof is only at the kind of the lower slung portions, the porch portions. The rest of the volume of the roof is actually the asphalt comp shingles. So it's used as an architectural accent to increase the, you know, the understanding and the integrity of the materials, and a nicer, lecher, more detail.
And it looked like you had, you, I don't know if it's you or the town had sent out some, some materials to the neighbors to get their input on the designs.
Correct.
And they've, they've seen these renderings, including the roof?
Yeah, they've seen all of the application, and they have access to all of it as well. I think we have seven, seven letters of support from the neighborhood. Nine. So we have nine, nine letters of support from the neighborhood.
Okay. Well, and I, but I think that it's, a lot of them basically were talking, I mean, at least if I read their intent, they were mainly comparing what you have now to anything that would be better than that. But, but, but as long as they've seen...
It's a relevant point.
As long as they, as long as they know, they, they've seen these renderings, and they know what, they have access to information about what materials...
Yep, Michael, Michael socialized the neighbors with all of our drawings and renderings. They have a full set of plans also.
All right, Commissioner Erickson?
So thank you for all the work you've done since the last meeting. I think you pretty reasonably addressed most of the issues that were raised. I have only one question, and it's about the three-foot setback as opposed to five-foot setback. So you'll need to check my math, but if, if my sense, my understanding is correct, the, the size of the backyard is approximately 45 foot 6 inches by 60 feet, which is approx, which is a little more than 2,700 square feet. If you move the garage... If you move the garage two feet closer to the house to accommodate the five-foot setback, that takes 120, roughly 120 square feet out of the backyard, which is a little less than 5% of the size of the backyard. So while I understand the argument about compatibility, about the other things, it's, you know, about other setbacks in the neighborhood, and I understand all that argument, it's not clear to me why that 120 square feet or about 4.5% is critical in the backyard such that we would grant an exception to the five-foot setback.
Okay. So I, having done a lot of work on houses in the R1D neighborhood downtown, reduced garage setbacks are pretty much the norm, and that's just what I see as, whether it's Almond Grove, Glen Ridge, this neighborhood in particular. I think for us, it became even more important because one of the things we really wanted to do was actually pull this house back off the street a little bit to help with the bulk and mass of the corner, in addition to the fact that Public Works requires that we take an additional diagonal setback here because we are a corner home. So in my mind, this becomes even more important because the additional foot and a half that we lose based on the geometry of the curb cut here from a viewing perspective that Public Works is concerned about, we get to gain back by reducing this setback here. That's why we're not asking for a setback that's reduced on two sides, only the one. This side, we're trying to maintain compatibility with the neighbor. This side, I'm trying to capture what we lose due to view corridors and Public Works requirements with this triangle and our pushback.
Go ahead.
I guess I figured that out, okay, on my own. That really wasn't my question. My question was, why is it critical? Why is it critically important? Not that most of Almond Grove, but why is it critically? You're asking us to make an exception to the setback for less than 5% increase, or decrease, or however you want to look at it, in the size of the backyard. Why is that critically important as opposed to accommodating the setback?
Well, I feel that it's important, and the main reason is because the intersection is very busy. There's a lot of traffic that goes in and out, and with a small child myself, I prefer him playing in the backyard rather than the street. Those extra, those extra feet that we could gain by having that garage setback further just allows for more playing for children in the backyard rather than playing on a busy street with a busy intersection.
So let me ask my fellow commissioners. We only have one speaker card, so I'm going to go ahead and allow the member of the public to come and speak, and then we'll continue our conversation. So I'm going to call Wendy Page up.
Happy Veterans Day. I am the neighbor directly to the north.
Could you make sure you state your name too for the record, please?
Oh, sorry. Wendy Page. I'm the neighbor directly to the north, so the little cottage that you see in the photos belongs to the house that we own at 470 San Benito. That cottage has a separate address of 307 Andrews Street, and that's the one that butts right up to the setback you've been chatting about. First of all, I want to express the fact that I am in favor of this project, and largely for the same reason that you folks have addressed just recently, that it is so much better than what's there already. But I think it's also a very aesthetically-done project, and I'm very supportive of that kind of quality work in the neighborhood. I also, before I get into my question, want to commend the staff who helped me when I first got notice of this. I was actually in Europe and could not attend your previous meeting. And the arborist, Rob, and Erin, and Mike Weiss, the engineer, were all so communicative and so helpful in helping me raise any issues I raised, and obviously, they communicated with you my initial concerns. My only concern at this particular point is your item 60, the item 60 that came, I think it came from Erin, on construction noise. I, I'm concerned that full-on construction can go, according to this, on weekends, holidays, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and I don't think that's reasonable. I don't think we should be sitting around, not that, not that Mike wouldn't be, you know, considerate of us, but with the house that was built, the other house that was, is still in the process of being built on Monterey, we had very many really early mornings on the weekends as well where it was just noisy, and especially in the initial stages of construction. So my follow-on question would be, how long is this project intended to go on? What's the actual construction piece of it? How long is that anticipated to take? And could you consider not having construction on the weekends and holidays? And that's really all I have to comment on.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the speaker? Commissioner Kane?
I want to be sure I understand you. You're okay with the eight to eight on weekdays?
Yes. Yes. Well, eight seems late to me, but whatever. I get the fact that, you know, time is money, and they're going to get started, and we want them to go to it.
But you're not okay with any work on any weekend or any holiday?
Exactly. Now, I do understand that the town has, in the past, permitted work on Saturdays, but I thought that that work was, you know, not all day on Saturday. I may be wrong about that, but I just wanted to raise my concern.
And the reason for that is what? You're anticipating a great deal of disruption and noise?
Well, we are directly adjacent to the property, and, you know, people drilling and all kinds of things on the weekends and on holidays. I mean, I have to say, I was shocked to see holidays here. Sundays and holidays, yes. Saturdays, whatever it is that you guys do normally, I will, I will accept and be happy with. But I don't understand why work would continue on a Sunday or a holiday.
Well, I think what it does is give, you know, they certainly may work, but it's designed to give them the option, if they need to get something done and they want to pay double time, and hopefully they do, that they have the option to do it, not that they necessarily would. And I don't, I don't know how we tie that down any tighter.
So I would just offer that the times and days, including weekends and holidays, is directly from the town code. So those are the town code requirements, that they be allowed to go during those days. Now, that doesn't prohibit the commissioner from requesting of the applicant whether they would consider some modifications to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Talasfor, did you have a question for the speaker? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we give the applicant an additional five minutes. If you heard something you wanted to respond to, if you have anything addition that we need, you want to add? Okay. So then I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing.
What if there's a question?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry. Actually, yeah, we're probably going to have questions for you, so I'm not going to close the public portion of the hearing. I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if you have questions of the applicant.
Okay.
You might, I know. So sorry. Commissioner Kane?
Larry Cannon has sent a number of response observation letters requesting this and requesting that. On two occasions, he requested, I believe he requested, you may know better than I do. He requested that the porch roof be made of the same materials as all the other roofs in the house. I would extend that to say the same as all the other roofs in the neighborhood. So I heard what you said earlier. It's a, it's a, it's a personification of architectural self, or presentation of self in everyday life, as Irving Goffman would say. Is it essential?
I think it is. I think when you look at, first of all, I work with Larry Cannon in many other townships. I have a lot of respect for him. I understand where he's coming from. However, I think on a shingle or craftsman-style home, it's not a perfectly relevant comment. I think if you look at the history of architecture in those two styles, you'll see a mix of roofs, and you certainly won't see, you certainly won't see asphalt comp shingles as the predominant defining architectural element from back in the day. So when you look at, I think, quality materials, which is one of the things the design guidelines really tries to perpetuate, is quality of materials, I think we could all probably say it's not ideal to have asphalt comp shingles. So we look at asphalt comp shingles that have high definition. That helps in terms of making them be something that's more relevant in terms of today's technology and building materials being applied to current construction. I believe firmly, as an architect, that adding the standing seam metal roof is a huge bump in architectural integrity and provides another texture and an element at a pedestrian level.
What does that mean, architectural integrity?
It's a better, it's a better building material.
Because we're, that's it. That's where I'm going. You think this is superior?
Absolutely.
And that therefore makes it a good idea?
I think it does in specific homestyles. I don't think it does in all. I think it has to be applied carefully.
I'm up against the concept of compatibility, and clearly, this is not compatible. But then there's the foolish consistency of making everything look alike even though this other idea is better. You referred me to the book, used it as a source. I didn't find THE chapter on metal roofs, but I did go to the Residential Design Guidelines, and page 32 and 33, I think, speak about compatibility. I don't know that much about metal roofs, but if there was, and the commissioners may be able to help me, if there's a chance it's going to stand out like a sore thumb, then, with respect to its, with respect to the neighborhood, there are no metal roofs there.
No, you're right. There are, there are no metal roofs there unless you look at probably different little illegal structures in people's backyards that were kind of done back alley-sally, but that's not the kind of metal roof we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, a corrugated Appalachian metal roof. We're talking about a standing seam product with a satin-to-mat finish on it. This is, this is a material that...
How much will that glare? Is it, is it flat-flat?
Satin finish.
How much will it glare?
It's not going to glare. Look at, look at it right now.
Tell me more about your use of the word "superior." Why is that better than everybody else's roof?
I think when you look at, so without offending everyone who has an asphalt comp shingle roof, asphalt comp shingle roof is a cheap building material. It's like stucco. We live in the world of asphalt and stucco from an architectural perspective. If you look at homes of quality, back even from 1900s, 1920s, up to 1940, before production housing came into being, asphalt comp shingles is a production housing material. Unfortunately, it's something that's incredibly affordable, so people put it on their roofs all the time. So then it becomes something that's consistent downtown. You can't put a wood shingle house, wood shingle roof on anymore and qualify for insurance or fire compatibility or anything like that. So by default, we have a production-level, cheap material that now has become what we're considering the social norm as far as built architectural environment, and we're simply trying to elevate the integrity of downtown by bringing back metal roofs.
I don't want to belabor it. I want to learn. But you're only using it on the porch. Why not the whole house?
I'd love to use it on the whole house. It's expensive.
Save some money. Don't put it on the porch.
I, I think it's better to have it be a design element. I think, I think it's really important to start changing the language of the town from being cheap asphalt to something that has integrity.
Okay. And I join Commissioner Erickson in appreciating your effort in the letter you sent us. It was well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I saw Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Talasfor, and then Commissioner Hanson.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, but did you say that wood shake or wood shingle roofs are no longer allowed by insurance companies?
It's very hard to qualify for insurance with a shingled roof material, a wood shingle roof, and if you're in the wooie or downtown neighborhood or within a certain setback, you cannot get it to meet code.
Right. I am...
Fire hazard.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with you because I have personal knowledge to the contrary.
All right. Commissioner Talasfor?
Thank you. Yes, and thank you for, this is a much better presentation, although your diagram B, it was truly hard to see what the standing metal seam roof would look like, which was too bad because I was looking forward to being able to actually discriminate between the shingle roof at the top and the porch roof. But it was interesting hearing what you were saying about why you chose the metal roof, but then, so you told Commissioner Kane, I think, there's a question here. I'm going to get to it in a minute. I know. That it was more aesthetic. Is that how you said it?
It's a material that's more aesthetic that you're trying to bring back into Los Gatos.
In my opinion, yes. In your opinion? In my opinion, it's a, it's a, it's a material of integrity. It's not born out of production housing and...
Right. But then you talked later about it being a design element.
It's both.
Oh, it's both. Okay. Well, that's good to know. So what happens to us is that we have this wonderful booklet of the commercial, you know, the Residential Design Guidelines, and page 32 and 33 talk about building design. And when I look in the neighborhood of this, I was a little concerned. You talked about being compatible with the house next door, correct, that was to the south, and then the one beyond that. Is that right?
I think we are in terms of overall spirit. I don't think that, I don't, I don't believe that the design guidelines are meant to be literally interpreted. I believe that they are meant to be interpreted in the spirit of the neighborhood as defined by the immediate neighborhood or specific neighborhoods. I have complete and utter respect for them. I understand that. But I do, I guess I do have a, you know, I don't think just because something was that it, that it needs to become the new pattern if it's not something that's, that's relevant to the particular style of architecture that's being presented.
Okay, right. So again, you're telling me that this is an architectural element, and aesthetic integrity aside, this was your element that you chose to put on here. But I also consider, and I'm not sure that you mentioned it, but there are homes across the street that are also in the immediate area. And I'm having a hard time understanding how your home, this structure that you designed, actually fit in with those homes across the street. And in, in the building design on page 32 and 33, whether or not we are being literal, it spends a lot of time talking about selecting materials to be sensitive, because the overall intent is that these homes that are in these established neighborhoods fit in and don't stand out. My experience as a planning commissioner is that when we, and we just recently approved, well, a house with a metal standing seam roof, it really stands out in the neighborhood, and it just doesn't fit in. And so the words in these documents have a lot of meaning to me, and that's how I interpret them.
Okay. So I guess to answer, I think what was a question there about how we fit in with the houses in the neighborhood...
Across the street.
Across the street.
As well.
Okay. I, I'm just going to use some of these as an example because they're current. This is the house on the corner of Bachman and Glen Ridge, produced out of my office. It's a lot of metal roof elements that you can see mixed with comp shingle roofs. This is a, this is a house that we get a lot of great feedback on in terms of it being a house that really bumps up the volume in the neighborhood and adds to the character and hopefully drives future homes to be, I think, better in the neighborhood. In fact, the neighboring house to the left of this decided to include metal roofs on their proposal as well, and is a very sharp home. So in, so I think that blending materials, like you see here, standing seam metal roof, shingles, comp shingles, works for the style of home that it is and is absolutely relevant. If you look at the neighborhood as a whole, so here we go, here's our neighborhood analysis. Again, we're the orange house on the corner. This is actually an eclectic neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood that is all craftsman homes. This is not a neighborhood that is all residential. This is not a neighborhood that is all single-story or two-story or Spanish-style or craftsman or anything. It's eclectic. I think it's our job in presenting a home to do the best that we can to pull a home together that's very responsive to the corner and that is beautifully done and beautifully articulated, which is part of the other side of the design guidelines, using, using materials that are materials of integrity. I can grab my packet and figure out which page that's on, but I don't know specifically yet, and it's just, it's okay, Gia, just leave it. But I, I do think that it does actually enhance the character of the neighborhood and put a stake in the ground to have future homes that come about, that will come about, because about because it is a neighborhood that is transitioning from funky office structures, whether it's through a CUP or otherwise, into predominantly residential.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, did you have a question?
Yes. I wanted to know the LRV for the metal roofing material, and, and is the intent to have the, the shingles on the upper layer be the exact same color?
If you look at our materials board back at the corner, you can see that we have kind of a mid-gray tone on the shingles. The trim is all white and the windows are dark bronze, almost black. The LRV on this particular roofing material more than meets the current, is it thirty-five? Thirty-five? That always, that meets the current thirty-five rating. I, I don't have the exact number. I just know from, there's limited choices in metal roofs, and you have to get into these dark gray tones in order to meet the current LRV. We are, we are not in Hillside, so LRV for this particular project is not relevant in terms of being a, a ruling force, but, but I'm a fan of a dark metal roof. No, no one wants a metal roof that's shiny. We don't want something that's reflective and bright and garish.
I'm gonna actually ask a question of my fellow planning commissioners before I ask my question of the applicant. I'd like to know, listening to the conversation, how many of my fellow commissioners feel that the metal roof is a point that we are going to continue to discuss and press, and how many feel that the metal roof is perfectly acceptable and would be fine with it? Who is fine with it? Okay. All right. So then I'm not, just for the sake of conversation. So I, I, I think then what we're saying is, while it's probably not the most common, then we are overall all right with the metal roof on the porch. So then I wanna ask my fellow commissioners, as far as point for conversation, how do we feel about the exception for the setback? Are you, are you, do you- Yeah. Who, who, are you generally all right with it, or is that a conversation we wanna continue on with the applicant? Are you okay with the-
I'm okay.
Anyone else? Or, okay. So then that is a continued question. So what I would, I would like to do is ask you, the owner. For the sake that I'm confident that you would like this item to continue on, would you be willing to move that garage two feet closer to the house?
One foot would be terrific.
We're asking for two feet so that we're not granting an exception.
Yeah, that'd be acceptable. Unfortunately.
I, I'm just, for the conversation, I noticed a number of people were bringing up, they were wanting to know exactly why. I, you, I think Charles articulated quite well the square footage, so I just wanted to know that if that was gonna be a sticky point that brought this back again, that may not be what Mr. Black wants. So Commissioner Kane?
Well, this being Veterans Day, I can make allusion of being a barracks lawyer. I'm a fan of law, and, and the law says five feet, unless. And then it gives six points. And staff has taken the opinion, I'm moving toward the opinion, that they've complied with those six points, which allows for the exemption. And I, what I would like to ask staff or the town attorney, we're not giving up the law on five feet if we say the proviso provides that it can go to three feet if these six conditions are met. We're not endangering the five-foot law, are we? Then I'm, I've moved to, to the law, and it, and the debate might need to be, did they or did they not comply with the six requirements for the exemption? For which reason, I'm now leaning toward the exemption.
All right. Do any of my other fellow commissioners have any conversation on that, or Commissioner O'Donnell?
Question. Is the public hearing still open, or is it closed?
It is. But just for the sake, we were, I, I was listening to the dialogue and felt that perhaps a couple of those questions needed to be put out to my commissioners so that we were-
My only suggestion is, if, if we have more questions of these people, fine. If we don't, and we wanna have a dialogue, we could close the public hearing, have a dialogue, make a motion, find out where we go. I, I'm just wondering why we're keeping it open, that's all.
Because what I was just getting ready to ask was, does anyone have any other questions of the applicant as far as those key items? Or any other architectural items that you have questions about? No? All right. Then I am gonna close the public portion of the public hearing.
I would like to say one more time-
Oh, never mind.
... that my neighbor to the north or to the west is right here. She's our biggest concern. She approves the project. She likes the project. It's the three-foot versus five-foot that affects her the most, and she's right here accepting the project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So I am closing the public portion of the hearing. I would like to know if any of my commissioners would like to make a motion, questions, comments?
Could I ask staff a question?
Of course.
We had some discussion, although I don't think it's a big issue anymore, but I'm just curious. We had some discussion about the use of, of wood shingles and whether or not, one, they're insurable, two, permitted, code, code compliant. And there was some suggestion made that in some places it would be code compliant and some places it wouldn't. I don't know any of that. So I guess I'm just asking staff, do you have any information on whether the use of wood shingles, cedar, I guess, would be code compliant in, in this particular neighborhood? Or is that really a relevant question?
So I do, I do not have the exact response to your question. What I will say is, we have seen people use treated wood shingles that meet fire code in certain situations. There are the Wildland Urban Interface where that probably is more problematic. I don't believe this home is in that area. As far as the insurability, I would look to people with more knowledge on that, on the commission.
Any other questions of staff or comments or discussion, or?
Motion.
All right. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make a motion, not optimistic, but I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the request, the application, that we find the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to section fifteen-three-oh-three of the, of SEQA, see exhibit twenty. We make the required findings as required by section twenty-nine-ten-zero-nine-zero-three-oh sub E of the Code for granting approval of demolition of a commercial building, and make the required findings that the project complies with the residential design guidelines, and make the required considerations under twenty-nine-twenty-one-fifty for granting approval of the architectural site application, see exhibit twenty, and make the required considerations as required by twenty-nine-forty-zero-fifteen-B-one of the Town Code to grant approval of a three-foot reduced rear yard setback for an accessory structure. Approve the architecture and site application S-15-018 with the conditions contained in exhibit nineteen and the development plans as exhibit twenty-three.
All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments before we vote? Commissioner Hanson?
I still feel pretty strongly about the setback. And my rationale for that is that the examples of the properties that don't comply with the setback were built prior to the code being, having the five-foot setback. So I don't know why it's such a big deal to move it two feet to comply with our code, which is there for a reason. And so I'm wondering if the maker of the motion would be willing to amend the motion to, to eliminate the sep, the violate, you know, the allowance on the setback. Other than that, I'm fine with the-
May I respond to that?
Yes. And then Commissioner Kane had his hand up.
I would respond it this way respectfully. I have a feeling that that ultimately will be where we're going. But I will also say that I think when you're in a neighborhood where a three-foot setback is fairly common, notwithstanding the age of the neighborhood, it seems unfair to acquire somebody who's coming in new, building a very nice home, to observe five feet when there seems to be no particular reason. The only person that could be offended by this would be the neighbor who's here tonight and is not offended by it. The homeowner would like a little extra room, and I think pursuant to the six requirements we have to satisfy, we can do that. If, if we simply wanna be consistent, or if we wanna take an old neighborhood and turn it into a new neighborhood, and then we have these discussions about metal roofs, which is, is a new statement. I mean, if we do not allow changes, like on the roof thing, we simply lock ourselves into the past. On the other hand, the reverse of that is, we no longer respect the past when we say that although many of the homes in the neighborhood are three feet, now we want you to be five feet. So I will not amend the motion. I'd rather just have the motion go up or go down.
Commissioner Kane?
Commissioner Hanson, I have a similar view, but I find myself awkwardly agreeing with Commissioner O'Donnell. It's, I don't know what's going on. I couldn't care less if every garage in the neighborhood had a two-foot, one-foot, ten-foot. It doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is the law that was passed, and then all of that is, goes by the wayside. I wanna, I wanna look at it, tell her, Commissioner Hanson. The law's intact, and the, the staff report said nineteen hundred to nineteen ninety-seven, they did whatever they wanted to. Going forward, that's not gonna happen. They're all gonna be five feet, boom. I don't care what the neighborhood's got, and all due respect to the neighbor, it's important to know that you're not offended, but the fact that you support it is not necessarily my concern with application of the law in a fair manner. So the law now says five feet. It's irrelevant that everybody else has got three feet, but it has six conditions that allows, says so. You can have a three-foot if you meet these six conditions. So that's why I was asking about the compatibility question, because it seems clear in staff's report and the applicant's report that they clearly meet five of those conditions. And then the, the third one is argumentative. But I agree with you, Commissioner Hanson, but that's why I moved the other way, 'cause I think it complies with the law, and whatever else people have done with three-foot, I couldn't care less. That's not persuasive to me, but this law thing that I learned between last meeting and this meeting, I found it persuasive.
All right. Commissioner Hanson?
Just to respond to the comments made by my fellow commissioners, relative to the metal roof, it's, it's in the residential design guidelines as a guideline. It's not in the Town Code. And, and there isn't any specification in the design guidelines that says you can't have a metal roof. And I, I was convinced by hearing the arguments of the applicant and the architect about the metal roof relative to being, you know, not standing out or sticking out in the neighborhood. But this other thing is, is in our Town Code. And, and as I said earlier, even though there are other houses in the neighborhood that setback, at the time that those were built, they didn't have this code requirement. So I, I still think it's a variance. I find trouble with the compatibility issue.
All right. Actually, Commissioner Erickson, then Commissioner Talisfor.
So I raised the question about the setback stuff earlier in the thing, in the conversation. I would have preferred that the applicant come in with a five-foot setback on that. They chose not to, and I will be supporting the motion because I believe that Commissioner O'Donnell in making the motion is accurate, that we can make the required considerations to grant the exception, and that is why I would support the motion.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. I understand the conundrum we're in, but I, regarding the setback, what I'm thinking about is not only this project, but I'm thinking about any other project that comes to us because then we might have a situation like this where, by the way, the neighbor does object to it. So then it becomes a matter really of, I mean, how do you take the, that's right, you have to apply the law. And in this case, we're going to have to do that because I have to think down the road to the next people. And the fact that basically this was a clean canvas, so the codes were there and you knew them, and to ask for that much of a, an exception, I mean, I just think it's a little much. And I think too, Commissioner Erickson's first point about reducing it was at one-point-five percent. What was that, that you said, Commissioner?
Less than four percent.
Yeah, less than four percent. That made total sense to me. So I cannot support the motion for that reason. As far as the metal roof, I could see that this is an architectural element. I don't think that it fits in to this neighborhood, perhaps if it's a smaller element, but it's quite frankly, a larger element. So I, you know, but I could go either way on it. And the reflectivity approach, I will tell you that as far as I am aware, I don't think it could ever approach the reflectivity in an asphalt roof. So that's my comment. So I probably won't be, I will not be supporting the motion because of the setback.
Okay. Commissioner Badami?
I won't be supporting the setback exception either, and I refer to exhibit twenty-one, the letter from the architect that gives examples of residences in the neighborhood that have the reduced setbacks, and I'm noticing of the five that only two are in the immediate neighborhood. So I'm looking at the majority of homes that do not have the reduced setbacks. So I do look at the immediate neighborhood, and I do look at the two that do have the reduced setbacks, and that would be four-eight-four and four-eight-two Monterey Ave. And when I look at the project in totality, the square footage of the home, and the garage, you're looking at about twenty-eight fifty square feet, whereas this particular project, when we look at the overall bulk and mass, the square footage of the home plus the seven-hundred-and-seventy-four square foot garage, we're looking at thirty-six twenty-seven square feet. So I just, I, I can't approve that. Now, I would like to clarify, you're pulling up an exhibit right now that's different from your exhibit twenty-one that actually gives me addresses. So if there's some information on here that's new to us that we don't have in our packet that's part of the immediate neighborhood-
Oh, I'm sorry, the public portion of the public hearing is closed, so we're not-
So again, the material that I have in my packet, exhibit twenty-one, gives me only two addresses of the five that I can see that are in the immediate neighborhood that have reduced setbacks.
All right. I just have one quick question to make for the motion. Would you mind, please, adding to your motion that we would ask the applicant that they not do construction on Sundays and holidays per the request of the neighbor? Would that be amendable to you?
Yes, although I think, yes, Sundays and holidays, I would, yes.
This is the second of the motion? Okay. So I think we've had discussion, so we're gonna go ahead and vote. All approve in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? So it actually does not pass. Four, two, three. So that means we need someone to please make a new motion.
Could you tell me, I, I missed the affirmative votes?
So the affirmative votes were Commissioner Kane, Commissioner Erickson, and Commissioner O'Donnell, with Commissioner Hanson, Talis-
So your request for the amendment was-
I didn't know how it was gonna go, so I wanted to make sure that was in there one way or another. So does anyone want to venture a new motion because we do need that on the table? So I wanna see how I can work this in a positive light. Because the applicant had said if, if it had to be that they would do that, can I make a motion approving but with the caveat that the property be moved, or the garage be moved?
Yes, irrespective of whether the applicant agreed or not.
Okay. So I'll try to go through all this. I'm gonna make a motion to approve architectural site application S-15-018. I'm going to assume I don't need to restate all the findings earlier, yet I am going, do I have, really? That the project is pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of California Environmental Quality Act. This is categorically exempt, that the project is consistent with the redesigned guidelines. I think, actually, am I reading on the wrong section? Yeah, thank you, I was.
Can I just ask why she can't make the motion, adopt the motion I made, except insofar as she's changing it right now, make the change? I don't know why we have to go through this.
You certainly can. Historically, we haven't, and so I don't wanna make that change since historically we have, and there might be other changes that she's gonna go through. But she certainly can say the motion is to approve the same findings that were made in the previous motion.
I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible.
Okay. I like, I like as easy as possible. So the motion is to approve site and architectural application with the findings as outlined by Commissioner O'Donnell, with the exception that we are going to not approve- by Commissioner O'Donnell with the exception that we are going to not approve the exception for the reduced setback for the garage. I am, I'm also going to add to the motion that we request that the applicant not have construction on Sundays and holidays as requested by the neighbor. Is that going to work? Okay. Do we have a second round? Commissioner Kane? Are you, you have something you wanted to add? Yes, Commissioner Erickson?
So this is a question of the staff, probably Mr. Schulz, but I'll let you decide. So in, in not approving the setback, does the maker of the motion have to qualify by saying that they cannot make the required considerations for making that setback? Setback except?
I think it's included within the deliberations that occurred, so I'm fine without it, but if the maker of the motion wants to put it in there, but it was discussed quite in-depth by the four that had voted on, on their reasonings, why, which I think classify as, as required findings. But if the motion maker wants to put it in there, certainly can.
I personally didn't feel it was needed based on the discussion that had been had that I know is recorded. Any other questions or comments? We have a, Commissioner Erickson?
So then could I, could I ask for clarification from the maker of the motion then? Which of the specific six required considerations can you, cannot be made?
I, I found it to be the compatibility with other structures in the neighborhood. I do not feel that there is a mass quantity of items that are with the reduced setback. Thank you. And based on the historic nature of the neighborhood. Those were the two I had noted earlier, so I did not feel that that met those requirements personally. Okay? You want to vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed by Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Paulson, are there any appeal rights on this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal. That decision to the town council, the forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within ten days and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
All right. Do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
We do. I want to update you on what the council did last week on November third. First of all, they did end up approving the valet parking ordinance. They recognized the considerations and thought that the planning commission had put into it, but after their own deliberations, they decided to approve the, the ordinance and also approve a companion policy regarding valet parking. And that's coming back for its second reading with the policy next week. In addition, council considered the Hillbrook traffic monitoring. We've hit that six-month mark and so we've looked at the traffic analysis and the council concluded that they were heading in the right direction and essentially met the requirements. So now the decision about whether or not to vest the CUP rests with Hillbrook. That question was asked of their, them very directly and they acknowledged that they still need to talk with their board about whether or not they're going to vest the new permit. So we all need to stay, we need to just watch and see what happens. The Quail Hill application that you saw a few weeks ago was appealed to the council. Council agreed with the planning commission and denied the appeal and approved the home. They did change the, one of the conditions and asked that the applicant resolve the easement issue prior to the issuance of building or grading permits, so that way that can get, get dealt with. And then I just want to announce that on the seventeenth, the council will be appointing its new mayor and vice mayor and after that council meeting, which is probably going to be fairly brief, we will be having a reception to which all of you are invited, probably around seven-thirty or so here in the council chamber lobby, so you're welcome to join us. And we are continuing to recruit for boards and commissions. So those of you who are interested or know of friends who might be interested in serving, including on the planning commission, we're accepting applications through December fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other commission matters? Seeing none, meeting's adjourned.